Committee, if you would rise with me and say the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Eichman?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Ms. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Dana Miller?
Here.
Mr. Etter?
Here.
And if I can get a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Mr. Etter?
Yes.
Mr. Dana Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Recker?
Yes.
And if I may get, well, first off, are there any comments or corrections with respect to last month's meeting minutes?
Good to meet.
I wasn't, I wasn't here, so I can't say whether they were good, bad, indifferent.
I think we can trust Kelly.
Yeah. Say they were good, then.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Dana Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Etter?
Yes.
Mr. Recker?
Yes.
All right. Welcome, everyone. On the agenda for this evening, we have Sims number 79-3, 8790 Governor's Hill Apartments, modification to a final development plan to allow for the conversion of the existing office building into a 64-unit apartment complex, including parking lot revisions and installation of new landscaping in a dog park area. Brian?
Good evening, Brian Snyder. I'm on County Development. You should have a copy of the staff report for this case. As you stated, this is a final development plan modification. This double-letter district dates back a number of years, obviously, in 1979, the name of the case. This was originally approved as a development that was a mix of apartment, or of retail strip centers and office buildings. As it was developed, it became more office and ended up as mostly office park. There've been a number of modifications over the years to this site, including, most recently, two modifications to convert what was called Building J at the end of the road to, from office to apartments with some outdoor amenities, including a pool and some other things. That was approved by this commission in 2022 and 2023. The request before you tonight is to similarly convert another one of the office buildings in the office park to apartments. This would be 8790, it's a little further up the road, closer to Mason Road than the previous request. This would take the existing building, make very limited modifications to it, and convert the interior to 65, I'm sorry, 64 office, 64 apartment units. Staff reviewed the request for consistency with the zoning resolution, specifically starting with the Board of County Commissioners resolution that approved the zone change in the '70s. There are a number of conditions related to that zone change. There's no issue, staff found no issue with any of those conditions. There are a couple of issues with zoning compliance and some additional issues. I'll go through those briefly. The intensity of this development with 65 units on this lot would be 12.8 units to the acre. The maximum density permitted in the O district is 10 units to the acre, so this would need a variance of 2.8 units per acre to allow the 64 units on the five-acre lot. Staff has no issue with that. The development down the street was higher than this density, and there is no other zoning district that they could ask for that has a higher density, so this isn't, you know, foregoing a zone change where they could ask for a different zoning district that'll allow this. There isn't one, so variance to this number of dwelling units would be appropriate and will similarly grant it to the building down the street. No new lighting is being proposed on the site. However, it's not clear if they are proposing to change out any of the fixtures, add new lights, or any of that. Staff would suggest that no new lights be added to the property without submission of a lighting plan in compliance with the code. The parking analysis indicates that there's a large excess of parking spaces on the property over what's required. Residential parking is much lower than office parking, and they're keeping essentially the same parking lot that was there for the, for the office building, so there's more parking than needed. However, it's unclear, a lot of the parking areas cross over property lines where they're not clearly delineated on the, the property lines between this development and the development to the north and south, so staff suggests that a copy of the, any parking and shared access easements agreements be submitted to make sure that they have enough dedicated parking spaces. I'm sure that they do, but this is something we would typically recommend with a shared parking situation. In the landscaping, there are just a few more details that would typically be needed on a detailed landscape plan. We recommend that those be added and submitted as part of the final development plan. And then finally, there's some discrepancy in the building elevations versus the footprints. The footprints of the buildings seem to indicate patios with awning structures or something like that, a shade structure. The building elevations that were submitted just show the existing building elevations. Obviously, the building elevation should be updated if they're proposing to kind of punch holes in certain areas to add, to add in balconies or add awnings. Staff has no issue with that. If they don't do it and they just keep the building as it is, it looks like the building is there today. If they do do it, the adding of the balconies and the awnings will probably make it look a little bit better, would probably improve the appearance of the structure based on what is currently there, which looks like just a, pretty much a rectangular office building. That's all I have. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
So going to your balcony comment, on the floor plans or standard floor plan that says terrace, and it looks like some of it is abutting or going beyond the building, that's sort of what you're highlighting here?
Yes, correct.
And then, one other question is, you talked about parking. This is presented to us tonight. The process is, is we're reviewing this for the zoning or the entire development?
This, this is the zoning final development plan. It's the final development plan for zoning. They would still have to go through building permit review and all of that. So you're, you're essentially looking at all the aspects of the site, the building footprint, the site layout, the landscaping, the lighting, the parking, all the things that we discussed in the report.
Okay. And then, so then, based on that, you said that if the parking, if we sit in wherever decision we make tonight for or against, but you said that if it wants to go in a scenario that it was for, they'd still have to submit a parking plan, but what if that doesn't, like, how do we make a decision without?
Oh, you, if you, if you were to approve it and not grant a parking variance, and then it turns out that 200 of their spaces are dedicated to the property to the south and they can't meet the minimum parking, they would have to come back through another process. They would have to reapply because now they would need a parking variance that they didn't need today.
But right now, it's, there's no request for that. We don't know that answer, is all I'm getting at.
Correct. But yeah, when I pointed out in the staff report, it's like 152 extra parking spaces. They're only required to have 100, and they've got 200 and something spaces. I don't think that it's going to be a problem.
And then, we do, on here on the plan, it says luxury senior apartment homes. Is there anything, I guess the applicant will say, but has any been, been submitted that says that it's going to be age-restricted or anything like that?
No, and frankly, we wouldn't ask that question. We're not really allowed to regulate that. Like, you couldn't condition your approval on it being senior only.
Well, for any reason I say that, in other municipalities that I do work in across the country, the parking, there are parking requirements based on the age of the restriction of the tenants.
Oh, okay.
So as, as you go up in age, if you start at 55, you need 100, 90%, 65, if you restrict it, they reduce the parking.
Right. In, in Sims Township, it'll only go down if this was some kind of nursing or assisted living facility. If it's just independent living apartments, whether it's age-restricted or not, the parking requirements would be the same. It's two for every two-bedroom and one and a half for every one-bedroom.
Okay.
So they're not proposing any medical assistance onsite?
I don't believe so. I didn't see anything like that on the floor. You can ask the applicant.
Yeah, I didn't see it either. I just, I would like that confirmed.
Sure.
Okay. Brian, I, I have a question about this, not just this particular building, but this entirety of this area, and whether there is or has been or should be any kind of planned redevelopment as opposed to what I perceive as a piecemeal approach where one developer comes in and says, "I want this building," and another developer comes in and says, "I want that building," without any coordination or consideration for the overall use of that plot of, of area?
I mean, I, I'm a zoning administrator. I respond to zoning requests.
Yeah. So if there were to be something like that, that would come out of the trustee's office or how would?
I don't know how the government could force the private property owners here to come up with a plan, other than to encourage them to do that, but as far as being regulatory in that nature, I don't think that that's something that the township would get into.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they could do some sort of, you know, area planning, comp planning, kind of like exercise, but again, you would need to sign off from the developer. And since this is a planned development, really, it would, you know, all the property owners would have to sign off on any changes to that final development.
Right. And what, what you're running into here is that, is that the O district isn't an office district anymore, it's an O residence district with office. And number one and two permitted uses are single-family and multifamily residential uses. Those are the two primary uses permitted in the office district. So it's hard to say that, you know, there's too many apartments in this office district when the whole zone is now a primarily residential zone with subservient office uses, and that's what the district is called, so.
I guess, one last question, which again, probably is not in your area purview, but I'll go ahead and ask it. I mean, you know, from a, you know, from the density of, of people living there, and again, this is luxury senior apartment, which we'll figure out what that definition is when we talk to the applicant, but is there any consideration for school district and other kind of, of review?
Generally, no. The school district's required to respond to the number of school kids that they have in their district. I know there were no school plans when, I mean, any of the other single-family neighborhoods were approved in Sims Township.
Okay.
It's something that the school district's required to, to adjust to as it needs to.
Okay. Thanks.
I can ask another question. In your report, you have an area you call zoning compliance, and you reach out in the code, and you, you talk about the variances in a sense. With intensity of use and outdoor lighting, you sort of bring up the fact that there's no lighting plan.
Right.
And then you go to additional analysis, and you bring up parking, landscaping, and building elevations. All relevant stuff.
Sure.
The one thing that, you know, we see as, here is signage is the other one that we, we don't see any signage on here, at least I haven't, nor is it addressed. Is that something that we need to?
Well, the applicant did not ask for any signage, either on the building or a freestanding sign. There is no freestanding sign for this development to begin with, so.
So the assumption is there'll be no signage?
Any, there wouldn't be any new signage, correct. Like, if there, if, if this building had a panel on somebody else's sign, they were allowed to have it through face changes, this tenant could put their name on that sign. The same if they have any, you know, any rights to any of the pile-on signs on the highway. They're not proposing any changes to the signs, so they would all only be allowed face changes. If they wanted to add a new sign to the building, they would be back in front of this commission asking for a signage approval.
Okay. So by having nothing, doesn't mean we're approving?
Only what's there currently. And honestly, I think all that's there currently is a big address number on the top of the building, which is, which doesn't count as a sign.
Okay. All right. I was just clarifying. Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Someone here on behalf of the applicant?
There is.
If you could please give us your name and a address before you begin?
My name is Sean Donovan, and I reside at 235 West Court Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present our proposed rezoning efforts of 8790 Governor's Hill. Our team, Joe Berardi, TJ McManus of Berardi Partners, Bob McCain of Uber Management Company, Daniel Buchenroth with the development team, are deeply committed to revitalizing the building, contributing to the positive transformation of the community and nearby businesses on Fields Erdel Road. The impact of the global pandemic and subsequent shift towards remote work has significantly impacted the demand for office space. As a result, the building at 8790 Governor's Hill, currently over 60% vacant, presents an opportunity for adaptive reuse to address the evolving needs of the community. Our intention to repurpose the building into 64 senior Class A apartment homes aligns with the existing zoning designation of planned resident district with subservient office space uses. We are confident that this conversion will seamlessly integrate into the area and enrich the neighborhood with meeting all the established requirements. It is important to note that the decision of the trustees to approve the conversion of the neighboring office building at 8600 Governor's Hill to apartments sets a precedent that supports our vision of bringing positive use to vacant property. The precedent further underscores the alignment of our project with the evolving needs and opportunities within the township. I would like to hand over the presentations to Joe Berardi and TJ McManus of Berardi Partners, who will delve into the final plan in more detail, including unit types, parking, finishes, and amenities. This will provide a comprehensive understanding of how the project will ensure a high-quality living environment for the senior residents and contribute positively to the community. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to these two who know what they're doing.
Good evening, gentlemen. If you could identify yourself and provide an address as well.
Sure. Joe Berardi, BZMBOYER, representing Berardi Partners at 1398 Goodell Boulevard, Columbus, Ohio, 43212.
And TJ McManus, M-C-M-A-N-U-S, with the same address.
So I think what I'd like to do is introduce the project, kind of give you a brief overview, and also address some of the questions regarding signage, building elevation, and some of the plans. So really, what we're trying to do is revitalize an existing building that's, you know, as it was previously mentioned, 60% vacant, so our focus is to bring in senior luxury living apartments into the building, so our purpose is to revitalize this to an underserved population. You know, with the growing trend that people are working remotely, you know, this is a prime opportunity to take an underutilized property and reinvigorate it. As you can see by the site plan, I think one of the comments was, you know, concern about parking. We are currently overpart. Mr. Buchenroth here can talk a little bit about parking agreements, but essentially, what we are required to have are 103 parking spaces. We're currently at 252. We're also increasing the number of handicap-accessible spaces from six to 10, so an increase of four. So the whole idea is to promote accessibility on the site. You know, I think there is also some topographical challenges with the site, but, you know, we are proposing, you know, modifications, as you can see on the board over there on the left side of the plan. If you switch to the next board, one of the prime components that we're really trying to utilize in this design is really addressing the building efficiency and staying within the footprint of the building. So what we're really proposing is infilling the building without proposing any extra modifications, not really proposing any additions to the building. Everything is contained within the building footprint itself. At one point, there were extra terraces, you know, through the planning process and through cost containment measures, you know, we've decided to maintain the existing footprint as it is. So at this point, we have no further extra balconies, any sort of projections from the building. Everything's going to be self-contained. With this being senior luxury apartments, you know, we're also focused on creating amenity spaces that increase socialization for the residents so that there's more interaction within the contained building itself through fitness, through community amenities. You know, we'll have a community kitchen in the building so that it creates open opportunities for the residents to socialize amongst themselves or have guests come and join them. So this is the first floor plan, and then really the next floor plan is essentially a stacked version throughout the building. Next slide. And as we talk about, you know, the living arrangements of the building, you know, what we're really focused on is creating a lot of opportunity to have common area within the unit, so you've got a kitchen that overlooks the living space, utilizing the opportunities to, you know, capture a lot of natural light with the taller windows. We have an inboard bedroom that'll have clear story windows, so that allows the light to come into the space. And then we have a walk-in closet, and we have a full bathroom. A lot of the idea and notion behind the unit design is to create wider corridors to allow maneuverability so that aging in place can occur in this facility, and as residents age out, you know, it allows for a new crop of residents to come in. But, you know, we have spacious living spaces, there's a lot of opportunity for maneuverability even within the closets. Kitchens are larger. If you go to the next slide, these are some examples of other elderly facilities that we've done in the past. You know, I think that, you know, we have every intention of providing high-end finishes. We've got luxury vinyl tile that looks like wood, we've got solid surface countertops. Typically, we specify quartz, we've got contemporary finishes throughout, and then within the amenity spaces, as you can see, we really promote the idea of open space, you know, lounge areas, so that it promotes opportunities for residents to interact, or it allows them to have a place to go read a book, you know, in peace and quiet. Largely, these are kind of the finishes that we're really striving for throughout the project. You know, I think there's a couple of questions regarding, you know, the age of residents. We're looking at 55 and over. You know, I think Daniel can talk a little bit more about, you know, additional age restrictions that may apply to the project, but primarily speaking, that's kind of our main focus right now, 55 and over. Building signage at this point is kind of an unknown. You know, there's a whole branding exercise that we're going to go through. As that brand and the identity of the facility get finalized, we will come back and present a final signage package. That'll likely include signage on the building elevations, that will also likely include something on the monument sign, but at this point, we're not quite ready as the branding and the logos have not been finalized. With regard to the exterior elevations, again, we're really just looking at cleaning up the elevations. We're going to wet seal the windows, we're going to clean up the facade, you know, likely some paint, but, you know, generally speaking, there really is no exterior modifications that would alter the appearance of the building. I think that sums up most of the questions from what I have in my notes.
You used the term age in place, which is, doesn't necessarily describe 55 and older age in place to me as you started independent living, then you go to assisted living, then you go to memory care. I'm assuming that's not the case in this?
Yeah, that's not the case, but what we're trying to do is, we're trying to create an adaptable space so that as people, you know, lose mobility, there, there's opportunities for them to still live within the facility by creating those wider corridors. You know, we've got larger kitchens so that allows maneuverability, allows people that have mobility impairments to utilize walkers or potentially wheelchairs still within the unit, so it's, yeah, a slight interpretation of age in place.
Sure. And then, help us understand a little bit about your experience in this sort of field and what you've done. You said you guys are from Columbus, so.
Yeah. So a lot of my expertise, you know, really lies with historic rehabs. I do a lot of work throughout the state and throughout the country, you know, focusing on adaptive reuse. You know, some of the larger projects that we've done have been office-to-residential conversions. Actually, the most recent was up in Cleveland on 55 Public Square, so what we did there was we converted a Class C office space, which is, you know, very similar to this project, and converted that into luxury apartments, you know, and I think the image on the upper left is from that project itself. So a lot of what we do is we take a look at these opportunities of underutilized buildings and try to repurpose them, whether it's through historic credits or other funding sources that, you know, could apply. You know, there's some brownfield opportunities, so we assist the developers in that, in terms of credit allocations and what we can do to assist. But we do have roughly 45 years' worth of experience within that housing realm. You know, a lot of it's new construction, a lot of it is also adaptive reuse.
Great. You also said, is it, is it 40% full if it's 60% vacant?
Roughly 40% occupied.
I think it's closer to 20%, 80% vacancy.
So again, I think, you know, that just underscores the importance of trying to address this as an adaptive reuse, you know. The big thing that developers are really trying to do is, you know, reinvigorate an underutilized property and, you know, bring this to, you know, so that's a contributing member to, you know, the, the local economy as well.
So is this entirely independent living or is it assisted living as well?
It'll be independent living.
And there's no medical clinic or physical therapy or any of those types of services? No ambulance entrance, none of those kinds of things are required?
So we'll have an accessible entrance that allows for an ambulance to access the property, you know. So we're going to follow standard building code.
Sure.
You know, as we develop the plans, you know, there's requirements for clearance around the building for the fire department, also for ambulatory purposes, so if you go back to the site plan, you know, I think it's got, you know, the open perimeter requirements. It also, through the handicap accessible entrance, I think that's really where we would stage any sort of ambulance assistance.
But that's not a 55 issue, that's just the building.
That's just the building.
That's just, right, right.
With regard to, you know, physical or occupational therapy, there's really not a set program. It would be more or less, you know, we have a fitness facility, you know, I think if resident has a personal trainer, you know, they could come in and utilize that space, but there is no set program.
And because you're not planning on making changes to the windows or the exterior facades, I assume there's no fresh air ventilation in any of these?
So there are code requirements for that. We'll do that through likely an ERV system, energy recovery ventilator, so what we'll do is we'll take the exhaust from the kitchens, bathrooms, exhaust it through the building. There's a heat wheel, so that's the energy recovery component, and then that'll help condition any fresh air that we bring in. So everything would be done mechanically.
You can't on a beautiful February day, open up the window and get some fresh air.
Yeah, unfortunately, we do not have that ability now.
Yeah, okay.
Will there be any deed restrictions or any property restrictions on it being age limited? I'm just trying to think long-term that, you know, in 40 years, if there's not the senior market and you want to convert it into, you know, kind of any age apartment living, would that be possible?
My own answer now, or?
Sure. Just state your name.
Yeah, Daniel Buchenroth, I'm with the development team. So typically, that's held within the financing, so there's financing that's like specially allocated for senior projects. So the financing that we would go with would put a deed restriction in for the term of that financing. Once that financing runs out, then that, that deed would fall off. I guess it would technically be a property deed, but it'd be like right within the financing package.
Okay.
What kind of rents are you looking at?
Yeah, so the rental range, I mean, we'll have rents for the two-bedroom will be like right around like 1,800 to 2,000, and then you'll have one-bedrooms that'll fall kind of around that like 1,100 to 1,300 range, just depending on the size of the unit.
Are you going with the proposed lighting or do you need changes to that as well?
Actually, the proposed lighting is basically just keeping what's there, so we're not planning on any changes. Again, if we do make modifications, if, you know, for instance, we find that we need more lighting in the dog park, you know, and it's not covered through what's there, we'll come back and ask for, you know, an approval on the final lighting concept.
So the other places that you've developed, what's been your experience from an occupancy? How quickly are they ran it out?
So a lot of the projects that we develop, you know, where we design and work with developers, typically, you know, there's 100% occupancy within, you know, a couple months of the project opening. I've seen projects, you know, particularly in the Cleveland market, that have, you know, gained 100% occupancy before they're even completed. Same with the Columbus market. Cincinnati, I think, is probably pretty similar with, you know, what we've worked with.
Have you done survey? I'm just curious as to what's driving the, the folks to come, have you done surveys as to why they're wanting to move into a place like this? Because this is different than what has been out there, right?
Yeah, and I think. Yeah, and I think that from...
Yeah, so we had a market study conducted that showed there is a demand in this area. And two, with the age in place, like Joe mentioned, I mean, we see this being a lot of people, like grandparents that have families that are all that live in Simms Township, going to Mason City Schools, that they want to get closer to their family. And so we feel like there's a huge demand for that with the baby boomers, that demographic. So we feel pretty confident that there will be a demand for these apartments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that is in, that wants to speak that's also in favor of the proposed development?
Sure.
Step up and please give us your name.
Sure.
And address.
Hello. My name's Patrick Gates with Matrix Holdings. My address is 3814 West Street, Suite 100, Cincinnati. So, Matrix Holding, we're a commercial real estate investment group. We're the building owner. So I'm, in addition to the principal of Matrix Holdings, I'm also the management member of Gov Hill Partners, which is the partnership that owns this. So I wanted to give you kind of a little flavor as to the history of the building. And so the building was, it was built by Duke back in the late 80s, early 90s. We bought it from Duke in 2015. It was 35% occupied. So we put about a half million dollars into it, lobby renovations, restrooms, elevator, you know, all the, you know, splashy stuff. Got the occupancy up to 75%. And then now it's down to 20%. And we're just not having any traction there. For what it's worth, we also own the building next door at 8800, which is the building that Verizon's in also. So DeVry was in there. DeVry went out of business. We have not backfilled that space. And Verizon has a little bit of time on their lease, but they're going to go dark. They don't, I mean, frankly, even before COVID, they didn't really, they were outside sales guys, so they didn't use it a whole lot to begin with. So, so again, to, you know, my point is challenging office market here in Mason, and, you know, kind of this, this northern 75 corridor, which is what it's called. We own their office, too. The office, the class, it's, office has kind of bifurcated itself into a tale of kind of two office, there's the haves and the have-nots. Our Class A stuff along the 71 corridor, the stuff we have in Rookwood and Kenwood, we're getting higher rents than we've ever gotten. And it's 90% plus full. It's the, the B stuff and blue ash is struggling. And again, this, this market is, I mean, this is, I mean, if you're interested, I have information of 2019 occupancies and 2023 occupancies, just market overall. The current market overall is about 24, 25% vacancy in, you know, the entire Cincinnati market. Pre-COVID, that was about 18 or 19%. Up here, close to 45% vacancy. And that doesn't include the sublease space. So once that sublease space goes, there's going to be greater than 50% vacancy here. So this same phenomenon happened in Tri County about seven, eight years ago, and it killed their retail. You know, GE moved mostly, they were most, GE was mostly in Tri County, and they moved up to Westchester. And without that daytime, you know, traffic in the retailers, they struggled. And one of the reasons you see the mall the way it is, there's other things obviously going on there. But, you know, the, so for, because of that, Springdale, you know, Tri County, Springdale area, those guy, the anti-Christian of those guys have all said, they're like, listen, if you want to tear down any office or repurpose any office or any retail, we'll help swing the hammers. Because they know that the only way, only way to support growth is to have residents there, tax-paying residents there. The days of having businesses come and, you know, be there and then go home, as you all know, we're in a different world right now, right? So the big joke in office is it's not overbuilt, it's just under demolished, you know. So the good office, the good offices is fine. The obsolete stuff, like frankly this, it's, it's tired and needs, you know, repurposed. So, you know, you've seen, I mean, since 2019 to 2023, and again, I've got statistics I can give you guys if you want, but this area has built more office than anywhere in Cincinnati. There's a 400,000 square foot additional office being, that was built between 2019. And the reason I knew is 2019, because COVID's kind of that, you know, COVID's that thing there. In that same period, downtown has reduced its office space by a million square feet. And that doesn't include all the stuff before 2019. There was another 2 to 3 million square feet that disappeared. So you can imagine if that was still office space with the vacancy would be downtown. It's bad enough as it is, but a lot of that stuff is repurposed. So again, I, you know, we fully support this. We think, you know, folks at Kingsley, they have a great reputation, and I think they do great projects. And, you know, obviously, we wouldn't be wasting our time, you know, trying to sell it to them if we didn't think they would, you know, be the right group. So, you know, just wanted to give you the owner's perspective on this.
Do you have any plans for the neighboring building, or, you know, are there kind of any bigger plans for this?
It's for, it's for sale. It's for sale. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's possible, depending on how the outcome goes here, that that, it could potentially go a similar way. We've, we've looked at all kinds of options. Honestly, we've talked to self-storage people. We've talked to retail people, I mean, about using the building, scraping the building, all kinds of things. And it's just, you know, as I said, it's, it's tough. It's, you know, this, this makes a lot of sense if you can reuse some of the, you know, again, I mean, versus, I mean, to scrape the building, then you're just basically looking at land value. And, you know, we're not, I mean, we, we've owned it for a long time, so we don't have a huge, really high basis on it. But we probably have more basis than just straight land value. So again, this, if you get the right group, this, this can make a lot of sense. And as I said, it's, there's, I mean, it's, it's kind of a trend that's happening all over the country. Obviously, it's a, offices on the, doing this, and we don't have enough residences, right? I mean, that's, that, so it seems like kind of a slam dunk. But, yeah, so I mean, that's, that's right.
So I'll ask you the same question that I asked Brian, which is, why not come up with a better use of the overall footprint of this entire Governor's Hill package and make a, I don't know, a Westchester kind of solution?
Agreed, agreed. I see. And, and so, so it's kind of funny. There is actually a homeowner's HOA there. I mean, I'm sure you, I don't know if you know, I mean, I know Dobbs and Ackerman real well, and I know that they're done down the street. And they actually had to recreate that HOA because it kind of had gone defunct. And every time I look at, you know, we own two buildings there. And every time I look, we, we represent about eight or nine percent of the entire park, even though we have two buildings, because you've got the Worldpay building there, and then you've got the US Bank, the 8845, the newer building across the street. I think that's doing okay. Again, that's newer, newer, newer stuff, right? The Worldpay building, I think they're going to bring some folks back. So that works. I mean, that's what makes office so hard, because you have some stuff that's actually working, you know. And you don't want to just kick those guys out. I mean, they, people work there, right? You know, so I think that's the challenge. And it's not just on this side of the highway. You're going to see a lot of stuff on the other side of the highway is going to go through the same thing. Where you have one building that might be 83% occupied with one tenant, you know, and they, they've got their operations there, and maybe they have some infrastructure there or whatever. But yeah, as I said, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a, a project that would require a lot of coordination and subsidy and time and brain damage. And I mean, it's just, I mean, it's, in a perfect world, you're right. I mean, it, you know, you take the whole thing and you do this beautiful master plan thing. The, I think the, the reality of it is, and, you know, unless you're going out into a cornfield somewhere to do that, that's very challenging to do in a, in an environment where you have multiple owners, many of, many of which are large corporate owners that, you know, probably, no offense, but don't care what, you know, they don't really care, you know. I mean, they just want to process your credit cards and charge you money to do that. And that's what they're going to do. So, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Worldpay will help them with their credit card, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, exactly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just thought of a question. I'm not sure who the right person to answer this is. Is there a pedestrian connection between this building and, like, the adjacent restaurants and things like that? I mean, there's great opportunities for people living in there to walk to, you know, a couple of restaurants. And I just, I wasn't sure if there are sidewalks that exist.
So we're not proposing many site alterations. So what is there is essentially what, what we're going to live with. You know, if that's something that we need to revisit, then we can talk more about that with the developer.
There is a pedestrian sidewalk on the inside of the other side.
Okay. I can see it there now.
Yeah, yeah.
Right near Union City, the headquarters.
It'd be nice to have some sort of like crosswalk path, you know, that a senior would feel safe, kind of getting to that sidewalk. Just thoughts.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak against the current proposal? Does anyone have any other comments before we close the public hearing? With that said, I will close the public hearing and await comment from the board.
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Please.
Are we approving or recommending tonight?
Approve.
Okay. So, and we approved the other deal as well. We did, that wasn't the trustee function, that was our, I just wanted to clarify.
In some shape, it's got to the trustees, but final development plans are your, according to the...
Okay. Thank you. My opinion is, I think it's great. I like the use a lot. It seems to fit a niche that needs to be met. Maybe we can argue over the attractiveness, but that's really not what we're here for. And we do this across the country ourselves, and this fits, this would be something that we would invest in as well. So I, I don't have many issues per se. Obviously, there's a couple of holes that need to be filled in, but that's really all I have.
Yeah, I agree. I'm in support. Yeah, housing is a crisis nationwide, and we're only going to get more seniors coming our way. And, you know, looking at this and knowing that I have an aging mom, you know, this would be something that I would be interested in maybe in the future for her. Like, yeah, I think this is a good fill in a market that I'm not sure we have something exactly like this in this area.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing to consider, too, is the office space situation's not going to improve. I mean, you've got companies that are, are in leases that, once that lease is done, they're going to be out. And this, it's going to just exasperate. What's, what's kind of nice about this particular project is, is that you could convert it back down the road, because they're not making all these modifications to make it look residential. So as long as you guys can fill the place, which I'm guessing you think you can, because you're spending money to do it, that's, that's a good thing for our community.
Yeah, I actually would like some of those modifications, the terraces and whatnot that they were considering. But, you know, look, I understand the economic challenges, and so, and quite frankly, that's not really our purview. So, you know, I would support this.
I'm the same. I applaud the initiative. I think it'll be nice. I tend to agree. I like a little bit more pizzazz on the outside, but that's not my call. But I look forward to having you as a member of the community, pending our limitations or restrictions per Brian's request. Does someone want to put together a motion? If I understand you correctly, Brian, we need to approve, but we also need to include a variance for the parking, I'm sorry, for the intensity?
The staff report can recommend an organization with one variance. But it's not listed, I mean, the findings in the staff report encourage or suggest an organization with one variance. So I can spell out.
Can we just make a motion supporting staff, or do we want, do you want us to clearly?
Well, I mean, we could say them now, and then you can make a motion and say them again. We can make a motion, and we can talk about them, and then that can be part of the motion.
Right. I'll make a motion pending your discussion.
So the conditions of...
Do I need to second that motion?
Wait a second.
No, one second.
I'm still talking. Pending. Kate, you here? Go ahead.
The number of lighting be submitted without, or be installed without submission of planning compliance with the code. That parking access codes must be submitted as part of the final development plan. That a plan's key plan compliance with the code be submitted as part of the final development plan. And I was going to say that accurate building elevations be submitted, but now it sounds like that no exterior elevation to be permitted without group level final twelve plan modification applied. And then the one variance to allow 12.8 dwelling units per acre or 10 dwelling units per acre permitted. So four conditions with variance?
Couldn't have said it better myself.
But the one thing is, the signage, you, that's silent, but we know that's coming back.
If they want to put signage up, they'll have to bring it back.
And that's not part of our motion, then?
I take that back. Apologies. No free setting sign to be permitted because it's a structure that's not shown on the merit plan without approval of the final twelve plan modification. Building signage is not restricted other than what the code allows. So they're allowed to have a building sign facing towards the road.
Okay.
At a certain size, I think it's like 75 square feet per frontage.
We can't change that anyway.
You can. You can restrict it. You can say no building signage. And then they would have no building signage unless they brought it back through the commission. If you're silent on it, they could technically come in and ask for a building sign that meets the code on one of the sides.
Would they be permitted building signage on both the 71 frontage and the Governor's Way?
71 is not considered frontage, so, actually, for a certain area.
But there's a, there is a sign there.
There's a street sign, that's all. They just put the numbers up.
Yeah, right. The actual addresses are not considered sign.
So basically, what you're saying is they're probably going to be back in front of us for signage.
If they want signage, right, yes.
Yeah. We're going to be back in front of us. Okay. So that's, that's not on the, not on just recommendation that you just said.
They could let a building sign be now coming back to you. They could add a building sign to the building without coming back through this commission if you don't say anything about it. One building sign on one side.
So is there a motion? Is that official?
That's the official motion.
And we'll second that motion now.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Recker?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
You want to close the meeting?
Any old business?
Best congratulations.
Any new business?
There will be a new business.
There will be?
Yes.
Okay.
Any administrative matters?
No.
All right. We're still, we're still in session. Guys, we're...
We're still in session, guys.
That's right.
What's the new, what's the new business next month?
What is, what is the case? What's next month's case?
Next month is the outlaw.
Oh, the Coles. Coles outlaw.
Okay.
Oh.
The one we already approved?
No.
Was semi-approved?
No.
This is for an actual, like, business to come in.
Okay.
Yeah, because we saw like a concept plan, right?
We did a concept plan, right?
Yeah, previously, the outlaw was approved. The modification to allow them to split lot market is approved, but the final development plan for active business still had to come back through.
What's the proposed use?
No.
What's the proposed use?
It's seven brew coffee?
Yeah. Coffee?
A coffee shop, a drive-through coffee shop.
Director only, director and walk-up only.
Oh.
Interesting. Okay.
Okay.
All right. You said no administrative matters, correct?
Correct.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. Eickman?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
All right.